Hold order, the City Council work session for C V S Grand Forks Tuesday, August eighth, two thousand and seventeen is now five o'clock. Would a city clerk please go roll?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstein.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Russell. Council Members Clarence Better.
Here.
Mike Cox, M C.
Here.
Henry Twicken.
Here.
Mark Merz.
President. Assistant Coram, number one, request to file plan specifications for pond decommissioning. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we're kind of getting to the final stages of putting together the plans and specs for the Phase Two decommissioning project. I have kind of just a draft set here tonight if anybody wants to look at them. Again, right now, we're estimating about a total project around six point two million. Of that, the city is receiving, I think as we all know, about five point three million in grant dollars. And then, once we get actual bids, we will have to get that information to P F A. And then, they'll basically make up the difference in low-interest loans. So, whatever we don't receive in grant dollars will be made up with low-interest loans through P F A. So, again, just looking to file the plans and specs at next week's council meeting. Looking at setting a bid date for September twentieth at ten a.m. So, I guess with that, we'll be open up for any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Henry?
I just, I want you to explain a little further what happens after you complete the process, the new pond, and what happens to the concrete and so forth, like you gave today to the department head. So, that it's a public notice and all the people in this room understand what's going to happen. I support the project.
Yep. So, yeah, basically, again, Phase Two is, you know, decommissioning of the ponds. So, we're basically going to remove all of the riprap, concrete debris, the materials there. The intent is to give that material to the contractor, because he'll be able to take that material and crush it, you know, do whatever he wants with it to make, you know, crush concrete, gravel type of material. He could sell it to Portimix. So, again, the thought was just to give that material to them.
And pollution control has been here, isn't that right?
Well, pollution control was here last week, looked at our twenty-two acre equalization basin.
And when you, when you get down to the small pond that's left, it'll be a twenty-two acre pond, and it'll basically be dry as far as sewage is concerned.
Yeah, the intent is, I mean, there's, there's times with our high flows and stuff, we'll have water back into there, but for the most part, you know, we want it to stay dry. We do have drain tile on the bottom of it, bottom of it, so that hopefully the city can, you know, mow it, maintain it. But, yeah, we do have approximately, in the event we ever have problems with the forest main between here and Grand Forks, we do have about three weeks of storage in that cell also. So, that would give us time to fix the forest main or whatever.
No other questions?
Anybody else have anything? See none. Thank you, Mr. Emery.
Thank you.
We've had a discussion on implementation of a quiet zone. Megan?
A while back, the council was approached about the possibility of implementing a quiet zone along, basically from the bridge going past the church and school and the apartment buildings over there. At this point in time, we have received some information about how to move forward. In the packet, there was kind of a how-to, a step-by-step, and then a flow chart that kind of explained the same thing. The recommendation from the gentleman from the N S F is, once the three crossings are identified, to set up a meeting with the railroad, with the federal administration and the city to discuss, talk about. The quiet zone has to be a minimum of a half a mile long. Just doing a quick little measurement using the county G I S, if we lined it up with about Fifth Avenue Northeast, it would cover those three crossings, and it would be about, according to the measuring tool I used, point six, seven miles long, so it would meet the requirement. This will take some staff time, and at this point, I don't have any costs or anything available. There's a calculator that has to be used to determine if they can even meet the safety standard. I just want to make sure the council's still on board to look into this and see if we can get this implemented. But I just wanted you to be aware that it will take some staff time to get it done.
Do we have questions for Megan at this time?
Can you speak?
Yes, sir. Can you state your name and have Mark give you the mic there? State your name and address, too, please, sir.
I'm Dennis Larson. I live at two oh five Sixth Street Northwest, and I just wanted to briefly discuss the quiet zone issue. My concerns are, since I live relatively close, I'm probably about three blocks from a railroad track. We moved here about five years ago, and at the time we moved in, I really wasn't aware. I guess my realtor neglected to tell me there was a railroad track three, three blocks away, but that's the way that is. But I'm actually, I got a little information in the sense of the program as far as noise abatement and hearing loss circumstances, which to me are involved with, with the railroad and the train that passes through there on a regular basis. And of course, they run with the air horns, and they're, they're quite loud, let's say. And one of my concerns is that, being the neighborhood we are, that train runs through there on a regular basis throughout the night, two, three, four times. And I have, I have counted as many as seventeen air blasts on the air horn when they go through at night. So, that, that pretty much takes care of any, any, you know, creates some sleepless nights, shall we say. But perhaps, perhaps the biggest issue to me would be the fact that that railroad runs in close proximity to the school over there. And I don't know how many children are in there, but as loud as those air horns are, I have a concern that the excessive noise that those air horns generate in, in the high decibel levels. Now, briefly, in the Air Force, I was a twenty-one-year veteran, and I have some experience with, with the noise levels and the aircraft engine run-ups and those type of things. Many years ago, the Air Force had a requirement where those personnel who worked on the flight line had to wear earplugs, and they also wore earmuffs that were for noise cancellation. That didn't solve the problem. A number of those people went on to, to experience hearing loss and difficulties, and eventually they were entitled to draw disability for partial hearing levels. And my thought is that, as close as that school is, and I don't know how many children are in there, but I know how loud those air horns are at my place, it's got to be twice that or more over at the school. So, I would think that that would be a grave consideration for the kids that are in that school, that, that you folks take a serious look at this quiet zone issue. I know there are many cities that do have quiet zones, so I know there are a lot of stipulations and regulations, et cetera, but hopefully, that could be worked through, and you would take a, take a hard look at this and, and take a positive view of it and see what could be done to resolve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I know that Mike Powers is here also, and he did come to us, it's got to be about two months ago now, maybe? They started talking about it?
Yeah.
And we talked about it, and he brought it back to us due, from the Sacred Heart School and, on their behalf, that he came in. So, I know, I think we're taking the steps to make sure that we, there were some questions that we had, how we could do this, and I think that we're still moving forward, and I still want to move forward, and I hope everybody else does, and to see what we can do. So, hopefully, we can get down to the, to the end of it, and we can get it, get it accomplished, so. Mayor?
It's going to take a lot of patience, Megan, so I'm glad you're doing it. It won't happen overnight.
Anybody else have anything? Everybody else still okay with it?
I'd just like to make a comment. I, I think it's important to recognize that I can hear where I live, I live up in the north end, quite a ways up. We have the priests home there, there's a number of people there constantly, and they work hard and they need their rest. We also have the town square, which is primarily elderly. There's over a hundred people, men and women, that live there. And I, I think that if we can reduce the noise, get arms, I, I think we're going in the right direction.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Demer.
I guess I'm just wondering, what do we need from this body to move forward, if anything? Or are we just committing to?
I think Megan is coming forward just to let us know what it's going to take, and that's just going to take some staff time. I think that was her intention, to bring this forward?
We don't have to look at what our start and stop is yet, or?
With his recommendation to meet with them, I think, since we know where the three crossings are, and kind of talk about that with them to see where a good start and stop would be, I guess my assumption would be basically from the bridge, right, as they hit land till, you know, that half-mile mark that we have to meet. But basically, their recommendation, because I think downtown Grand Forks is already a quiet zone. That way, if it's...
Are they all, all the way out to, aren't they out to like Forty Second?
Yep.
So, I mean...
Through the university out there, yep.
And as long as we keep it within the city's limits, we don't have to sign any cooperative agreements with any other entities, which will help move the process along.
Are you thinking toward maybe going on?
I would say, if you're going to do it, go out to Mallory Bridge. I mean, it seems like that's, I mean, and maybe not, depending on what's going to happen on that corner exactly, but, I mean, like you said, everybody said...
Mallory Bridge?
Or the highway to the corner?
By the Riverbend?
Highway two and Business Highway two?
Highway two and two twenty, heading south.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying the corner of Business Highway two and Highway two is going to be modified, so depending on what that does or whatever, might make some changes there, but...
I guess, depending on, I kind of looked at all the private crossings that are out there, and I guess it would depend on price and what would have to be done at all those private crossings all the way out.
Right, but we could, there's some that could be eliminated possibly, too, in that area.
You're asking if we can just take a school report that would include all that, see if it's feasible, and what would need to be accomplished to get to where you're going to?
Well, I just, I'm wondering is, if there's a certain cost to getting it going and getting it done, you know, obviously, there's infrastructure that would have to go in and all those type of things, but if you're going to do it, it's better to do it once and have it done right than, and, I mean, there's people, if you look at where the Mallory Bridge is, I mean, there's people a few hundred yards across the river, you know? I mean, the mayor's right there, you know? So, it's not like, it's not like you're completely out of the city just because you've passed the bridge, you know? And there's people, there's people just to the north of that, too, you know, just across, you know, and stuff, so...
I think the issue is jurisdiction for us.
We own all the way to the dyke or whatever, so, I mean, the Mallory Bridge is a little bit...
And we're going outside the city's limits to the, to the east, because the Mallory Bridge would be outside our jurisdictional limits. And then, I think the private drives, you'd have to talk to them individually, but I don't think that the city can force them to close a private entrance on the way out.
No, I'm not saying we would, that would be our approach even, is to force anybody, but... Just get an estimate of cost. If you have a private drive there, you might not want to have the horns blasting in your, in your... If the study area could be that large, and I, it is, you know, to my neighborhood, and so I'd have to be very careful as for a conflict of interest, but you're right, as for how close the trains are to those homes back in Maplewood, certain times of the year, maybe where you have your windows open at night, and it does feel like they're right in your backyard. But if they're, I think it's going to be cost prohibitive, because every crossing seems to carry a little bit of cost, or, you know, a significant amount of cost. But if, if there is some way that that could be included in the conversation, that'd be interesting. Well, I, I think you start from the ideal, right? And you, you need to pare it back, you do, but...
No, I don't see anything wrong. I know Carly wanted some, yeah.
I just wondered to see if you could give some kind of estimate to be included in the budget, if there's something related to it. Two hundred and twenty, if you just a rough estimate, I know at some point in time, maybe they would cost another hundred, twelve thousand dollars or whatever, if it was, if, you know, if you could add them.
Sure. Mark, do you have anything else?
What I was going to say, too, is, on the cost, if, if part of the goal is to go after, you know, either federal, state, safety grants, you know, you might as well go after it once than going after it twice. I'm just saying, if, if there's going to be a match of a certain amount, you might as well do a bigger...
Is that a question for Nancy? Would that be a question?
Well, I think that's part of the, I think that's historically been part of the processes, you go after, there's...
Right, no, I'm just saying that...
Right, so I'm just saying is, go after a bigger project, and if it's not something we can afford, pare it back.
Mike, yes, sir? If you want to step up to the mic, Mike.
Mike, it's here, I'm Mike Powers. I probably instituted this process, or initiated, I should say. What I would look forward to is getting a meeting of the minds that Megan has in that outline and that memo we got from that fellow with the railroad. We need to have, we need to sit down with the city, the D O T and the railroad, then we can determine what course of action we need, and then maybe they'll give us an idea on cost. I've been trying to get a hold of Jane Williams, the lady who carried the football for the city of Grand Forks, and she must be on vacation or something, out of town, and she hasn't returned my calls, but I think that once we have that initial meeting, then a lot of information might be coming forth, and we can move on from there. I want to address something that Mr. Larson brought up, and it has been, it was an issue one time in Grand Forks where the engineer, the driver of a train at one time, got a little carried away, and I don't know what happened, but they found out who it was, and that apparently is a no-no. So, if you're hearing seventeen blasts in one evening, I'm thinking something's wrong. And the other thing is, one of the reasons that I started this process is that I walked out the door, the main door of Sacred Heart one afternoon, and the train was coming, and when it hit that blast initially, I couldn't believe how loud it was. And I'm on the other end of the block from where the grade school is. The principal there has told me that when the children are out in the playground and that train comes through, they're going like this, because it's so loud. And I'm thinking that'd be the case. That's a health issue. I've also been told that, I can't remember who it was, but they're contemplating on raising the decibel reading on the horn, because people, vehicles nowadays are so noise-proof, you can't hear outside noise, and a lot of people are distracted, they're playing the radio or whatever, but they may make it even louder. And I don't know about that, but I would encourage us to pursue a meeting and go from there.
I think if we keep moving forward, pursue that meeting, maybe we'll get some costs laid out.
Right.
Expectations of what the timelines are, how long it will take, and then we can...
See, this was done back in oh nine or oh eight or something like that? Yeah, and I'm guessing that those figures for crossings and gates are going to be horribly out of date.
Those might be funding sources also, because that changes as well, other funding sources.
Right. The good news is, we only need crossing gates at that one intersection over by Sacred Heart on Third. The other two already have them, so it can be done.
Yep.
And I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? See none. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark.
Number three, city property possibly available for sale and develop, Mr. Gertie.
Two things to get started. First, if, if the maps that we have in here are adequate, that's fine. If not, Megan and I talked about it, we can bring up the, the aerials from the county system.
I think these are fine, sir.
Second thing is, you notice I did not say these are surplus properties. These are city assets that might be available for sale, and the staff talked about it. In particular, Mr. Murphy and Jason and Nancy and Water and Light, and I have all talked about it, and I've been in touch with Mr. Emery, so he's aware of what's going on here. So, the people that, and Reed was also involved in that, the people who might be using these assets were all involved in the meetings. And what we did is, we identified a few assets that could possibly be available for sale, and some of them may be available with limitations. And with your indulgence, I'd like to run through them. If you turn to the first page, it's the page that looks like this, it's called "The Property Behind Cabela's." There is a major utility line that goes through that parcel. Light, Water and Light has informed me of that. They have recommended that it not be made available for construction, but that doesn't mean it couldn't go to the adjoining landowners, for example, as something that they would end up taking care of, as opposed to the city being responsible for that lot, that parcel. The second one is the parcel that's between, just west of the police station. I have talked with Chief Hedlin, he has, did not have any difficulty with that parcel. We have, any utility lines that are there are protected in easements, so that that is a parcel that's potentially available for development. The third parcel is near Cabela's. It is a parking lot, partially a parking lot, partially green space. We, there are parties who have expressed interest in that lot, it's actually three tax parcels. There are people who have expressed interest in that lot, but that is something that has been discussed before in conjunction with the proposals to develop the area between up North Pizza and the V F W. So, what we'll need to know is a sense of what, and all of these, we'll need to know a sense from the council of the acceptability of proceeding with anything on here. The next parcel is a triangular piece. I've talked with Nancy. It is a mess in terms of where rights of way are and where easements are, and that will all have to be straightened up. There's at least one party interested in that property right now. But as you go by the bridge, I mean, you can see that, and everybody's familiar with it. The next parcel is down along Greenway, and you can see it's a remainder that is owned by the city. There are two adjoining residential property owners. There are easements in place for the utilities, but we would suggest is that this should go to the adjoining property owners as opposed to being made available for general sale. And the last parcel, last, are two properties at the end of the cul-de-sac on the north end of town. Steve, which one of those cannot be built on because of deed restrictions? Do you recall?
I believe it was the larger of the two.
I, that's my recollection. One of the parcels was acquired by Valley Golf years and years ago and cannot be used. There's a deed restriction on it with a reverter clause that does not allow the construction of a home. Okay? Right now, there is an easement that the adjoining property owner has on it for access to his property. In addition, there are utilities with a utility easement on that parcel. The other property, there has been an inquiry on it, and it is a parcel that could actually be built on, as I recall, and, but we, we will go back and confirm that. So, when we went through the list of city properties, these are the properties that we identified that we didn't have, that, that could be made available for potential sale to persons for development.
Where, where is that cul-de-sac on?
Down at the end of twenty, up there, end of where I live. You go down, Brian Kingdom used to live.
Oh, I just, I can't, I don't see any kind of streets on...
I think what you laid out here, I think what you need to proceed with putting them up for sale, and if there's, let's say, one that has to go to a adjoining landowner, that's the only thing that can be done on it. I would, that would be my preference, just to see if they want to buy it. With the ones that can be developed on, I think you put it out there as, as bids for sale, and upon approval of what's going to be built there, of course, I, I think that's the way to go. I don't want to see these go off to tax roll. I don't want to see it going to somewhere where it's, we're going to lose and not have the, on the taxes, even at, right now, they're city-owned back down the road, I don't think. Why would we give up the opportunity to have something, stay in, go on the tax roll and in property tax? That's my preference, so... Henry?
Are you done now? I'd like to talk about the parking lot over there.
Well, we're going over the lots that he's talking about.
Yeah, what?
He's going over the lots that he has identified.
Yeah, yeah, are you done discussing the lots yet?
No.
Oh, okay, but when you're done, I want to bring that up.
Mark?
Go ahead, Mark.
Mr. Demer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you clarify again? You said, and I'm looking at the first picture on Third Street Northwest, eighty-three dot zero zero seven seven two dot zero zero. Is that the one that you said, they said has...
Utility.
There is a utility, there's an electrical line on there, and what we actually did is, when I talked with Keith and Jeff Olson, Jeff did a locate to, to make sure that where that line is, and that's what he found out in the field. And I have an email from Keith telling me that they did find it, they did locate the line.
There was never a house there?
That, I can't answer. I don't know what may have been there in the past. I don't know.
I mean, if they put...
Keith is unable to be in attendance.
I guess it's, if they dropped a line through there, that's questioning their judgment. I mean, it's right in the middle of a neighborhood. Why wouldn't you be able to do a small infill building there? That's, you talk about affordable housing, that's what we're looking for, is smaller, that's a perfect lot for some smaller residents. So, I mean, like I said, I, I don't know what's there or not, but...
The line goes right down the middle of the parcel. That's the problem.
Right, I'm just, to me, it looks like, at one point in time, that was a house. I don't know why you would have dropped it. I'm questioning their judgment, I guess, and I don't know what would have happened or whatever.
Something I can't answer.
Right. And if it's, if it, is it just a single, I guess I would like to know what the, what the determination is, or what?
It's a larger line, larger capacity line.
Yeah.
Anything else, sir?
I guess, the other lots, I, I don't think, I believe that we should retain the lot next to the police department. I think it, it fits in with expansion or whatever I think we may want to do in that area. I don't, unless someone can convince me that there's a suitable spot, I guess, but I would hold on to it as much as possible. I'm in favor of selling the two lots that are just, I guess, in between Fourth Street and Third Avenue Northwest. The, the utility lot, where the old water tower was, I guess I'm not opposed to selling that either, as long as the buyer's aware of what the utility situation is there, and that we, when we do it, or if we're able to sell it, protect our utilities. And then, that, the only question I have for the one that goes between, what is it, Thirteenth and Eleventh, is I believe we sold, we, we had to buy that lot back from, this is not here, but we purchased that lot back after someone purchased it to build something on there, and it didn't fit because of the utilities and all that stuff, so we ended up buying that from the developer. So, it's ours. I question whether or not, if we give this to someone, are they going to all of a sudden now question how much they're going to pay for their, their, their special assessments when the street comes around, because now all of a sudden, they're going to have this nice property, but now they're going, and then they're going to say, well, my lot is two hundred feet long, or whatever, so...
Maybe a hundred and sixty-two.
I guess, I mean, I know it costs us something to... I guess, I mean, I know it costs us something to probably mow it and all that, but if someone's going to buy it, you got, or we're going to take, give it to them, they, it's got to be a neon flashing lights that this is going to go into your special assessment.
Street's already in a...
What's that?
Street's already in on that one.
Maintenance.
Right, but they're already 11, 12 years old. I mean, you're already, I mean, and then on that other one, I know, I've talked to the neighbors over in that area, they, they've thrown out the option of them purchasing it. The only other thought I had was, if you really wanted to fit a house in there, you could replat it, right? I mean, most of the problem is over on the other side, right? On the big side.
There's one lot that's available for, for construction. The other, the deed restriction covers the entirety of the other lot. So in order to even have that as part of a buildable piece, you'd have to get that deed restriction removed.
Was that deed restriction back when the courses that run through there, it doesn't run through there anymore?
No.
I mean, I would assume that there would be, okay.
I guess...
Lean in toward the logical...
Yeah. I would just say, that would be the only way I would sell it, is something that, whatever, or the neighborhood wants to build on it. I guess that's my take on all of those, if you wanted to know.
Mayor.
My point was going to be just that, that please, we probably have it in our boilerplate purchase agreement drafted by our city attorney, but to show that all appropriate special assessments for future street maintenance would be applicable, and some of those in the maps do have some good length of street running adjacent to them.
Any else have anything on that? Henry, did you want to talk about your preference for the one behind VFW here?
Yes. Mr. President, Mayor, members of the council, quite a while ago, we had representatives from Sacred Heart to purchase these three lots at the old Red River Motor Company lots. I'm very familiar with it. I can go back to 1933 and tell you some stories about it. They, and I'm also very familiar, for the benefit of people who are of the Catholic faith who are on the council, of the building programs of Sacred Heart School. We've had the, this property appraised, including paid assessments. The appraisal came back at $39,000. And what I'm suggesting is that we give Sacred Heart School, or its official name, if you have used church name, fine, a three-year option. The reason I say that, it gives them some flexibility. They have had a fun drive, I'm very familiar with that, and it's, to me, it's the highest and best use without a question. And that three-year option would, could not be assignable, encumbered, or transferred in any way. We would give a limited warranty deed to the premises, and it gives them some flexibility. They have negotiations in regard to number of matters, and I don't know if you're aware of it, but the Sacred Heart preschool has a reputation of being an excellent preschool. That's the direction we're going now in education. The state of Minnesota, led by the governor, has pushed that program hard, and we are having it, we've got preschool now in our public schools, and the early schools of Sacred Heart have a, have an excellent reputation. And we had a president who believed in preparing for the future, his name just happened to be Ronald Reagan, for Mr. Mayor's satisfaction, and he made the statement, the future belongs to those who prepare for it. And we, as fathers, grandfathers, and so forth, we prepare the future for our children. We want to give them the best education possible. And the greatest inheritance that you can give any child now or in the future is a quality education. It beats any inheritance that you can give to them. And we have, Public School is going through a big building program, and I think very strongly that they should have the flexibility of this, and I'm going to take and move after the council decides. I want to move down for approval. I talked to Aldrin, Mike Pocorinsky, yesterday afternoon. He agrees with me, and he couldn't be here today, and I'd like to have my neighbor here, Tim Riafell, make some comments, and the mayor is very familiar with Sacred Heart's educational program. I'd like to have him make some comments in that respect of what I'm suggesting.
After you, Jim.
Thank you. I'm highly impressed with the progressive nature of Sacred Heart's education over there. They, probably six of my neighbors have come forward, and all expressed an interest to me, that they would like to see an expansion done. So Sacred Heart is in the process of trying to grow not just the building, but the school, the church, and everything. What Henry said, I kind of just like to say that the preschool is excellent there. Absolutely fantastic. And three of my neighbors have kids in that program, and it shows. And two of them went through the public school system here in East Grand Forks, and for them to change their mind was pretty big, because they bleed green and red, but now they're going purple and gold.
And if you'd want, I agree with what you said, Henry, about our public schools are going strong, massive rebuilding over there to expand and, and serve our community. I love our public schools. I can't say a bad thing about them. My two sons came through there, I came through there. I mean, that'd be the one negative is, is me. But beyond that, I look at, you know, just the complete education that, that I received and my two sons have received. So how does that pertain to this? Sacred Heart also, we know faith-based organizations in the last couple decades have really struggled. You know, church membership and attendance is down, and in many ways, these organizations have faltered, but if Sacred Heart has the plan and the vision and the ability to grow and expand and serve our community in a whole bunch of ways. I mean, look at what they do, you know, just the good work that, that they do through the church, serving everybody in the community, and then to the school. We have Riverside Christian School, also a big space, a beautiful facility, big playground. And I agree also with Mr. Tweetin that the priority of education for our community. So that's step one, is to get these young people ready to make a difference in the world. And step two is, let's have it be a community where we can plug these folks in after their graduation. Keep them right here. These are, these are quality folks that we want to have stick around. So I, I'm a big supporter of, of schools, including Sacred Heart. We can find a way to, to make that marriage where they can have that land and put it to, to a good use, part of their expansion plans. I'd support that.
Any comments? I think we, one thing I need to make sure that we, we better be careful, it's, I'll just say it, I have nothing against Sacred Heart, but we need to be careful with the public school systems, because they're also going through that process where the, as Henry put it, as the state of Minnesota pushing it, actually, it's the governor pushing it only. Need to be careful, because it's going to be mandated for the public school systems too, and they're going through that process of what to do with their preschool. So it's not just Sacred Heart growing, it's also going to be the public schools growing. And I think with, looking at it, as I stated before, taking something, two pieces of, three pieces of property off the tax roll, especially ones that has already paved and concrete parking lot, which could be used for a business that would go there, I think we need to be careful. It's in the downtown area, it's in, in an area where we want development for downtown. I think that we want development downtown still. I think that's still the growth area that we're, been on a path of. I think that we need to make sure that we open this up to everyone and not single it out and hold it for somebody. I understand what Mr. Tweetin's saying. Nothing against Sacred Heart. I think they're doing great. There's a lot of people that are excited over there. But I think we need to, as a city as a whole, need to make sure that we're doing the correct thing and making sure that we're opening this up for everyone that wants to develop in this city.
I, I understand that, Mr. President, but the other side of the coin is, this, I think doing what I've proposed will take and increase people coming to live in East Grand Forks, and that'll offset what we're talking about very, very much. And if I didn't think so, I wouldn't be making the comments I am. I'm not worried one bit, regardless if somebody might disagree with it. I've been in education practically my entire life. In 1952 or 53, I led the movement to get a master plan for public education in East Grand Forks. I got, I got the tech school, what's now the tech school here. Took me lots of time, lots of politics, and I spent lots of money. And frankly, it's the best thing that I ever did for East Grand Forks, except I also was very involved in my church. And the thing is, we've got a well-rounded community, and we can expand it, we can bring people in here. People are concerned about their children's future. Grandparents are concerned. That's what I'm concerned about. But this, this particular program of preschool, I had relatives that were, were going to send their children, their girls, there to that school. So when you get into education, the lines are blurred.
Any else have any comments or questions? Mr. Emery, on the properties?
I'm just making sure Gordy aware, and then you can talk about this later. She was off a business to the old water tower site. I do know when that water tower was taken down, foundations were cut off, probably about two feet below ground, so if someone was going to build there, whatever, they're going to encounter the foundations from the tower. The only thing I want to check on 11th Avenue Southeast and 13th Street Southeast, this parcel, I do know the city has a force main that comes up this general area and kind of cuts back here and dumps into a manhole here, I think from the city's sanitary lift station 16. So we just got to make sure we know exactly where that lays out. And, and then I'll find the information on this, because like you said, I know the one has a building restriction on it, and I'm even questioning if the smaller one, with the levy easement that comes through there, if there was enough lot depth left there to build on.
The drawing you prepared showed there was territory, enough territory available.
Okay.
I just can't find it and...
I'll find that for you.
Mr. President, what I'm looking for are, is this set of parcels acceptable to move forward to, so that we can go through the, the policy in the process that the city council has adopted for dealing with city-owned properties?
I think it is. Any else have any issues? Any else move forward with the process?
I like it, bring it out, where folks do have a shot at them. Anybody who is appropriate for the purchase, instead of it being limited to just a few.
Thank you, sir.
Remember that there will be a public hearing involved in this also, with people who other parties may wish to participate. So there's a lot to move forward.
Thank you, sir. Number four, update on developers' agreement. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hopefully, this one shouldn't be too overly complicated. When we met on June 27th, the last time at the work session, council had directed staff to prepare the draft developers' agreement, including the six options that were presented that would be available to the developers to finance the cost of infrastructure improvements to the new developments. Those have been included in the attachment A, and I believe they are all set to go. The one thing I will, Mr. Better did point out to me right before the meeting, that there is a typo on section H there, public improvement standards. Number three should say, the developer shall obtain all necessary permits before proceeding with construction. So we will make that adjustment. So what I'm looking for tonight is if there's any questions or comments, otherwise we will, I will bring this forward at the next council meeting for approval.
Anybody have any questions at this time for him? I want to make sure that in here, and forgive me if I don't remember where it's at, you know, what we've gone through now regarding special assessments and how they're, we go about doing new construction or whatever it may be, when we get down to the point where we're knowing special assessments are coming out, that they're being done before, one way is to have it built and the special assessments are on the roads before they can even dig ground in anywhere. Right? And if we're doing the phased developments on here, I mean, how are we going to guarantee that we're not going to run into issues that we're running into now? And I mean, I know nothing's going to be 100% guarantee, but that's, my worry is that we're going to go down the road that we're in now, that we're going to have the issues like we did with the developers, doing a phased development. Are we going to, how, how are we going to address that to make sure that we're not?
Well, under, under the attachments that we have there, as far as the financing of it, they wouldn't, it would be the same for each phase. For example, the situation that we have out there right now, they have phase one, phase two. Before phase two would even be eligible to be sold or any of those kind of constructions, that phase would have to go through the, through the plating process as well, and that would need to be in there. So, so each, so really each phase would be treated like its own plat, or they would fall under the condition, number, letter, letter B conditions of plat.
So let me give you a scenario, which we all know what the scenario is going to be. Say one area is done, phase one's done, all of a sudden, phase two comes around. Is phase one cut off, going to be cut off from everything that happens in phase two if they're connected somehow, whatever it may be? I mean, I just want to make sure that we're not running into those issues again, that there is a phase, it's already been done, it's complete, all of a sudden, the second phase, that all of a sudden, it comes back, well, we're going back to phase one to reassess that. I mean, are we protecting ourselves in that right, on these developers' agreements?
I will, Mr. Golson, but I believe it does, because it would, they, that would have to have been assessed prior to, once that, once that phase was done, those assessments would be...
Say phase one is connected to phase two and is road that goes into it.
Well, and that hopefully will, well, any wiggle room in that should be taken care of in the next portion of this, which is the assessment policy, redoing the assessment policy, where all new construction pays for it all.
You know what I'm going to, I'm just trying to go down the road where we're not going to have the issues anymore. We don't have to go back and forth on these things and make sure that we're doing it correctly and that...
This developers' agreement should take care of that. The, the assessment policy will, in my opinion, cause no wiggle room in that whatsoever, but I will let the, the attorney weigh in on that as well.
I guess I just wanted to, realistically, even the developers' agreement we have in place at this point in time, I think that that is a valid agreement and it can be utilized properly. It's the implementation of all of this, okay? And just to comment on, I haven't rewritten, but paragraph G needs to be rewritten a little bit, because it specifically says the following chart outlines, well, there used to be a chart that said who was responsible for what in our development agreement, and that was pulled out, so I've got a mod... pulled out, so I've gotta modify that, that was pulled up by Nancy. Where Clarence indicated it should see the contractor. It depends upon how you're gonna do it, is the contractor putting in the improvements, or is the city putting in the improvements? And if the city's putting in the improvements, then it would potentially be city getting the permits. So we would wanna have city slash contractor, whoever's gonna be involved there. Then, my other comments are more in line with the financing options. And I know that from talking to Nancy, I think at least four, the first four of these financing options were kinda directly taken out of the development agreement that they have in place over in Grand Forks, okay?
That is correct.
The difference between the two, and I've had some conversations with Howard, and I've had some conversations with a couple of other individuals, and I'm waiting for two other phone calls, is that the city of Grand Forks, first and foremost, doesn't have to worry about the special benefits test, okay? The city of Grand Forks, all they have to do is provide that there's a benefit to the parcel, and then that, the amount of money that's actually being assessed to the parcel just has to be, it can't be, the calculation of it be arbitrary and compresious. If it's a logically fought-out benefit and amount that's being assessed to that parcel, that's all he has to prove in court. He does not have to prove in court that the improvement amount increased the market value of that lot by the same amount of the assessment. So it's apples and oranges, okay? The next thing that I think that we're missing here, and then in my mind, I'm not sure, depending upon what our developer, or what our special assessment policy says, is that Grand Forks, and this is questions I'm waiting to get answered, but it's my understanding that Grand Forks requires the developer to pay 50% no matter what, okay? Then Grand Forks assesses the other 50% to the project. Hence, when they're saying the developer has to put in a 50% deposit, the developer, if the costs of putting in the utilities is 50% of the overall project, they're just looking at the fact that the developer is actually paying their 50%. Well, if we don't, if, I'm curious about what we're talking's gonna happen to this other 50%, because there's nothing to prevent us in this, in these financing options, that we're not gonna continue to run into the same type of problems that we are right now regarding special assessments. Unless, of course, we're saying that the developer's ultimately gonna be putting in the, you know, and I'm not clear from what are, where we're going with this, is the developer gonna have to put in all the street utilities, curb, gutter, and concrete for the street before they sell any lots? Because if they don't do that, then we run into the same issues that we have right now regarding specially assessing these properties, because we are not able to waive, or the contractor's not able to waive, the rights of the property owners when it comes to the amount of the special assessments. So I'm not sure how much this changes anything, other than the fact that we're saying the developer is putting 50% somehow upfront. We're still dealing with 50%.
I think, in the condition B there, in the first part of it, we put in there to try to specifically address that issue. So before a final plat may be approved by the city council, so again, before that plat would be approved, which means before, without a final plat, no lots would be able to be sold on that, because they wouldn't be individual. The owner shall execute and submit to the council an agreement which shall be binding on all owners and their heirs, personal representatives, and signs that no private construction on said land will occur, except with the approval of the city council, until all improvements required under this chapter have been petitioned for, arranged for, and bid slash obligated, or have been construction. So at least, at the minimum, they would need to be bid and obligated, so we would have that known price in there, that would be apportioned out prior to the final plat being approved. Because I know you can't, you can't prevent a developer from selling a lot legally by putting that on there, but we can put a condition on there, the final plat may not be approved by the council until that has been taken care of. So I think we, I think that's why we, with that first paragraph of B, was to try to prevent that.
And I agree with that, and I talked to Nancy about that. The coordination of this still is really foggy in my mind, because then you go back through some of the financing, and it doesn't appear that, that, well, for instance, I can pay you off your, I can pay 50% of the deposit in four equal terms over four years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, that, does that mean that he can't, I still have 50% more, and does that mean that you can't sell a lot on that property and develop it for the next four years, five? You know, I'm just, I'm just really fuzzy on how those two types of things go together.
Well, I believe, my understanding of how that works over in Grand Forks, for example, when they do that 50%, the other portion can either be, using what in the four equal installments, the, my understanding is, is that the city then charges them interest on that. I don't know if they, if they put it up front or what.
And this is all I think that we need to talk about and work out, because I am not, even from talking to them, I'm not sure what this means to us. You know, so I'm not worried about the financing measures, I'm not worried about the development agreement. The bigger concern is, is if our goal is to prevent us from having to continually argue regarding the special assessments that are being placed on these lots, one of the few ways that you can do that is require the infrastructure to go in before the lots transfer, so that the developer would have all these numbers, and they would actually, we as a city would have the assessments, if that's the avenue for the 50%, already applied to these lots, so when they're sold, they're included in the price of the lot. And if not, we're gonna run into the same issues that we're continually running into right now.
I think the one you're talking about in number two there, in attachment A, where it says, "In lieu of, one developer may make the deposit described in one, in four equal installments, the first installment to be paid prior to the wording of the contract by the city, then each subsequent installment shall be due on every board. Then each installment shall include an interest rate at the city's rate plus 2%. In addition, the developer shall submit an acceptable bond or other surety guaranteeing payments over those installments." So I think in that particular situation, where that would be, is the city would actually then go out and bond for the construction of those improvements, with having one, I guess, one-fourth of the developer's 50% in cash, having been paid already, plus a bond or other surety guaranteeing the payment of the following three payments, and then the other 50% assessed to the lots. So in that case as well, before that final plat would be recorded and those lots could be sold, the price would be known, and the installation would be in the process of being started for those particular improvements.
Basically, you're saying they have to have a letter of credit?
Yes, for the other three payments.
So I guess my only concern again is, is how we're gonna ti, how are you gonna do the timing? You know, are you really asking that these contractors put in the infrastructure before they sell their lots? If that's what this says, it doesn't say that directly. I think it'd be very easy to say that in the document, other than saying it's arranged for...
All right, well, I certainly would be open to any wording you might have to put into it.
No, I'm just, and I don't mean to be argumentative, I'm just sitting back here going, I just don't see how this is actually going from A to B, to make sure that on the back end of this thing, we're not in the same position we are today. And as long as somebody can articulate that, so that Mr. Emery has the same understanding as me, and Mr. Gander has the same understanding as you...
As Mr. Vedder?
Yeah, you know, then we're, then we're fine. But I just, I'm just looking at the wording of these things and how it's going together. And I'm, I'm just not clear on how the process goes forward, when we're still just getting a 50% down payment, and then you're not allowing, you know, the plat. I mean, and then there's a, there's another, you know, then there's always the last two financial arrangements that particularly seem to allow for exceptions.
Mary, you have something?
Now I have three things. First of all, to the question of, and I like the idea of pavement being in, and the contractors love it too, they're coming in with building materials, and they wanted to have pavement in on these new developments. Mr. Emery, question for you is, how critical is it, you know, you've done it, you've done curb, gutter, sewer water, and some of these trenches are quite deep. How critical to go through a freeze thaw, get your recompaction before you pave, you know, like a 12-month cycle between the big trench and the pavement? Is that a big deal or not?
Yeah, I think it is. I think at a minimum, you wanna let it go through at least one freeze-thaw cycle. I mean, I would never wanna put in, you know, especially the deeper utilities, and then try to pave that same year. I think we'd get premature settlement, cracking of our streets. You know, so the policy we've kinda had, where we put in the utilities, the curb and gutter, you know, we've just put it, put in the crush, let it sit for two, three years before we pave it. I mean, I think that's the best long-term solution. Again, how that all plays out in this development agreement.
Yeah. Another thing that Mr. Murphy and I talked about, one of our guiding policies has been, the new development pays for itself, and I know you wanna get to that point. Well, one of the ways you can look at that is, when you put in a development, and Mr. Murphy, this was his wording from another community, and it made perfect sense to me, one way to do that, not to say that we have to do it, is to take, inside of your development, you need to extend your street to the edge of your development, where the next one would hook onto it to continue on into your community. You would never expect the new development coming in to extend street into your development to tie in and carry on. So one way to do it would be, in this case, the 162 feet would've been built when Laurel Drive was put in, just for example. It would've been considered part of Laurel, as we've kind of indirectly gotten to, and the expectation would've been, you plat it, you build it, you plan for it, that you take the transportation element to the edge of your development, so that when the next one comes, you tie right into that. Or at the very least, make everyone aware, we're not gonna build that stub of 162 feet 'cause it's a street to nowhere, does not make sense to have infrastructure there for five or 10 years if there's no development tied in. But when it comes, it really is part of, in this case, Laurel Drive, not part of the new development, and therefore would carry back.
My point was not to get back into discussion Laurel Drive.
No, 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 but it's a, it's a good example. I love the example.
See, I don't agree with that example. Why would you put in a street going down, to me, that's a whole separate street. Laurel Drive goes this way, Brandon Boulevard goes this way, why would you hook in 162 feet off of Laurel Drive to go down Brandon Boulevard?
It does nothing for Brandon, it does something for Laurel, in this case, just hypothetical. It does nothing for the residents of Brandon. When they're going to town, they're going to town.
My third point.
My third point.
I'd like to make comment, I have to leave. What I'd like to see happen is that Ron checks with the league municipalities to see, he can explain the thing and see if they have some ideas. Then, our city administrator knows a lot of other administrators, especially in southern Minnesota. Visit with them, explain the facts, and try to see how they're doing it. And when we finally make a decision, we all wanna do the same thing. We wanna be fair, but we don't wanna continue doing what we've done.
I would love an agreement that is so ironclad, that a developer, homeowner, we say, "Take a look at the agreement, it'll guide us through the process." We don't have to go knocking on doors and saying, "Hey, how about this, how about that?" It's a done deal. Now, maybe, Mr. Galstead, Mr. Murphy, Nancy, anyone else who wants to volunteer, maybe we could form a little small group to meet a couple times to comb back through this once more, to make it the kind of ironclad deal. Ron, I like your thought. I like your thought, which is, what are we after? Are we, are we looking for pavement?
Take it out of the legal terminology and put it in regular terminology.
Yeah. Are we looking for pavement in place before lots are sold, or at the very least, the contract is known, the costs are somewhat known, and allocated to individual properties? If you had to wait for the next freeze-thaw cycle, you might put the contract out a year and say, "You can't start and end until this date, but we need a bid." It could be something like that. Eight, nine months out, start date.
Anything else?
So I would, I would like to see it, 'cause I'm with, whoever else doesn't wanna go back through it, we've just gone through, I'm with ya. Let's clean it up, let's tighten it up, and let's make it do for us what we want it to do.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just say, you're probably gonna get, if you thought streets were expensive now, if you expect contractors to bid a project like that over two years, you're, you're gonna get higher costs.
There are unknowns when it's that far out.
Right, and they're gonna price that risk. I'm just, that's my only thought on that. Talking about how you do it, as far as how you tie in, I, I think we can get too far into the weeds with trying to determine exactly how far people go, or whatever. I would just say, in that section E, the phasing section, that we say that each phase is whole and to itself, and all special assessments for that phase are applicable to that phase and only that phase, something to that extent. Because I think, I think how a developer wants to break out his phases is kinda, that's gonna be part of our lure to get them in. If, if we do this the right way, and you tell people, "This is what the price is," they've gotta be cognizant of that in the front end, and let them deal with that, let them break it up, don't have us sit there. And obviously, if they put in phase one, two, three, they put in phase one, phase two comes around, "Well, we wanna redo it." Well, it's up to the planning and zoning, and the council will say, "Well, you're leaving out this section here, what's gonna happen when we have to pave this?" I don't, I think then you deny the plat, you know, or the replat, or whatever. But I don't think that we should get too far into the weeds of saying, "We're gonna go right to the end of this property line," or whatever, with, or demand that you go X, X number of feet down each road. I think, like I said, it's simple as putting, if they're gonna phase a project, you include that project, you include language that says, "Everything that gets done inside this boundary is gonna be applicable to everybody that's inside that boundary." And if they wanna shift cost, if they wanna do that, play that game, that's gonna be very apparent when people come to look at prices. And I think most, I mean, developers, most of them are pretty intelligent people, and they know they don't wanna shoot themselves in the foot, you know, with a bunch of land and cost, you know, with, they don't wanna have $30,000 lots and sell them, only to have to have $300,000 lots to break even, because they, they front-loaded it all. I guess, if that's the case, then that phase just probably won't get done, you know? So I guess that would be my take on the phasing, just make sure that it says right in the developers' agreement, that this, everything in there is wholly applicable to those properties. And I guess, my whole take on, you know, the, the needs, or the special tests, or whatever, is that the whole point is to get that waiver right away, and get as much, and get that cost applied to the developer. So then, you don't have, we don't have the test either, you know, the special benefits test, either, if we can get a waiver from the developer.
We have one, and it doesn't do anything.
But that's because our process allows him to go forward and distribute that property before we have costs associated to it, right? So if we, if we do it right away, and we get the costs associated to it...
I think you have to get the costs associated to it, I think you have to get those assessed on the property.
Before a lot sells. Because then the buyer knows, "I'm buying it with that attached."
Yep, so that they're already there.
It's gotta be, I agree with that.
So I agree, I mean, I think we're all on the same page there, I'm not arguing with anybody. I guess, just a question, because I'm not a contractor, but to your point where, if you're gonna do phases, it stays with itself? You know, depending upon if the contractor's putting in the sewer and water, and, for instance, if we just take this last example, Water and Light wanted to bring it in from all the way... all the way from Reinhardt Drive to Laurel Drive, correct? Say, I just wanted to, you know, but I'm only building Pointwood 6, or I'm, you know, how are you going to, how are you going to do that? Because you're not going to stop, even if you require, you know, even if you require them to do it, you're bringing it all the way, either one all the way across, or you say, no, you can't do that, we're going to make you develop, if it's coming in from Reinhardt Drive, we're going to need you to develop Reinhardt Drive, the eastern port, or the, yeah, the eastern portion of your development first, so that you can bring it in. But then, even with that said, Water &amp; Light, if that's the one that are doing it, are going to want to bring it all the way down to Laurel Drive, so that they're not having to do it in two separate shots, they've got it under one contract. How do you, how do you, I mean, you're in this business, how do you, how do you do that, without requiring them to pay for it all up front?
I can answer that.
Okay.
The situations that I've seen, and I've been through several of them, and how you handle that, for example, like, the situation that we used, that extension of Brandon Boulevard over there, what you need to have, is you need to have a overall agreed-upon transportation plan, where you have decided where the streets are going to go, what your future development is going to be, and where those streets, and it doesn't have to be 100% exactly where they are, but, you know, that we have the collector's streets go through here, we've got the residential streets that connect up to those collector's streets, and you stick to that master transportation plan, so that when that developer purchases that, that area, they can kind of take a look and see where those streets are going to be, and what they're going to have to build. And even if they, so you, and they have to bring it up to where that next, to wherever their property ends, hook it up to that next property line. So, and it's the same thing with, for example, where the, use where the electrical, or whatever that Water &amp; Light would need to do, we know that that street is going to run in this section here. If they really want to do the west, in this particular situation, they really want to do the west section first, that is fine. They do have to, though, run that line at their cost, through where that future right away is going to be, and they have to either own that land and deed that easement to the city, or work with whoever that property owner is, and get that deeded. So, it's, so you have to follow what your, what your approved transportation plan is, where to get, to get that through. So, that, and we've even had situations, we would hear this all the time, for example, you'd run that collector's street through there, and that they only need a three, no, a four-inch water main to supply their subdivision that they want to build, but since that's a collector's street, and the future development is to go further down, we're requiring a six or an eight. They would, we were even more harder than that, we would say, you have to pay for that eight, even though you only need a four, because somebody else paid for that eight to get to where your property is, to supply you. So, you have to pay it, pay it forward. That, that's how it's-
Okay.
I've seen it work.
And then, the last thing was just in section G, that chart, I was, I want to make sure that that's in there, and that we, and that sidewalks remain a development, or an infrastructure that is in there. I don't know how we missed that in this last project, but it should have been included in Pointwood 6, because that was under a new development rule, so.
Any else have any comments on this? I think what I've heard now is that we need to have Mr. Galstead give it, Mr. Murphy, and that Mr. Gander would like to see if there's anybody that'd like to get together and go through overtime and talk about what our intent is, to make sure our intent is laid out correctly.
And I'd like to meet with us sooner rather than later, so if we have any volunteers.
Mr. Emery?
I'd like to include you, too.
Yep. I'd like to, I'd still like to try to get it on the next council agenda for approval, so we can meet-
Next Tuesday?
Yeah.
All right. I can be possible to get together with everybody? Mr. Galstead, Apple time? Next Tuesday, approval?
When do you want to meet?
Thursday, when he's here.
Do you have, I could meet after, what, 1:30?
1:30.
1:30 on Thursday.
Mr. Emery?
Good.
Are you available, sir?
Yep.
Okay. All right, sounds good. I'll move on. Number five, update on outdoor rink parcel process, Reed.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Megan, for a lot of this. She contacted the Polk County Recorders Office to see what steps needed to be taken next to acquire the property in Maplewood First Edition. They have sent an application from the Minnesota Department of Revenue that needs to be completed, and sent along with a $250 check, and a resolution by this group, just authorizing the application to acquire this property. And that would go to the Commissioner of Revenue, for them to authorize it back to us for ownership.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Thank you.
Is there a request to purchase a slope mower, Mr. Surtow?
Thank you, Mr. President. City budgeted for a purchase of a slope mower for this year, the budget was $110,000. We went out and looked for estimates, the estimate was $137,500, with a trade-in value of $13,000. I talked with Carla about financing, and she said that it would be, if the purchase was approved, there'd be a yearly payment from the Stormwater Fund to the CIP Financing Fund to reimburse. And I guess my recommendation would be to purchase a new mower from Swanston Equipment, it would be replacing our five-foot mower that we have right now, and it would be a pretty big asset for the Public Works Department. Currently, we have a 13-foot and a five-foot mower, and if the 13-foot, for any reason, goes down, which has happened about this year, but multiple times last year, the five-foot just doesn't take up the slack in there. And we could use two machines at sometimes throughout the year, and I just believe it would be a good machine for us.
How big's this one?
It's, it's a 13-foot, but really, the cut is a 12. It's the same as our other 13 footer, so, yep.
So, we're short $14,000 about, on budget?
Yep.
What's the, is it just, is the plan just a deficit spend, or is it?
Carla, could you answer that better?
I was just wondering if the plan is just deficit spend, or are we-
Oh, no, we're still, it's a CIP Financing Fund, where the cash flow is coming in and out, because we actually make payments in and out. It's just that we, the estimate we had was low. So, they had drawn up that end, and we're going to have to change the mower, so if we look on the buy, it's going to be a little bit higher than it was.
Yep, yeah, and that, next year, they anticipate having to go to a tier four mower, so the cost is going to be quite a bit more.
No, I just, I get that we're taking it out of our fund, but things have to balance, I assume. So, or otherwise, we should just take more, if, if-
So, that this fund isn't, is revolving fund, or is there a money?
I get that, but we budget, we budgeted for $14,000 less. What's, what's going to be the offset? Are we just, we're just going to have less money in that revolving fund, then? That's where we're getting it out of?
Yes.
We're just going to-
It's not in a hole.
Okay, so we're deficit spending for this?
Well, no, not really, because, okay, so in the fund, the projects are going to do a payload a one year, and say, there's $500,000 in the fund, so we're going to spend $200 per payload, okay, so there's still $300 in the fund, and that money goes in there every year to pay it back. Okay, so now, we planned for $110 for the mower, but the mower's $140, so, but there's still $300 in the fund, so.
And the fund gets paid from what?
The fund gets paid yearly from other, elsewhere, some supplies.
So, that, so those-
It's the money, it's weird, because it runs like a bank account, basically. There's money in the bank, and they don't ever spend more than what the money's going to make.
2017, this didn't affect the general fund budget, it affected the capital improvement fund. Next year, he'll have the budget, and-
Exaggerate, debt phase.
For his payment back to you.
Right, okay.
It's actually a one internal loan fund.
Anybody else have any questions on this? I see none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number seven, discussion on Laurel Drive Special Assessments, Megan.
I guess I just need clarification from council. When the developer came in and signed the agreement for the two Laurel lots, a request had been made to see if the additional $5,000 that had been pledged could be assessed against the two lots. The agreement that was signed said $15,000 per lot, the council-
Hundred?
Or, I'm sorry, $1,500 per lot. With, so, that is what is currently signed, it is a council that makes the decision, and I guess I just need to know if the request will be granted, or if I leave things as is, and I need to collect, for my paper, for the paperwork for the county, send it over for the $1,500 on each lot, and then collect the additional $5,000.
I think that was the agreement, the $5,000 would come from the developer, and the $1,500 back onto the lots. I think that's why we should leave it.
I'm inclined to support that. We came through quite a deliberation, and we, and we kind of tied a string around this thing under those terms, and I feel like we want to follow through with those same terms. And I think the developer's okay with that. He had a preference for the other, it sounded like, but he said it would not be a deal-breaker for him. He'd go ahead with Plan A, and I think that's a good idea for us at this time.
Any other objections, or any questions on that? Not removed. Okay, thank you. Number eight is park and rec fees in collection, Megan.
It was the last of the fees. It was for parks, pool, cemetery was all there, so, that's the last of it. If you guys have any questions, I know Reed kind of looked everything over, too, but otherwise, that'll be the last of the fees to come before you guys.
Any questions on the fees? So, no, appreciate it. Entertaining motion to adjourn. Who'd like Vedder?
I can-
Second by repeal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion's carried, meeting is adjourned.
You don't have to say anything?
Yes.